Let's get that started for you now, Chair.
Thank you.
It looks like we're live on YouTube now.
Thanks very much. So, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the consultative meeting of the Development Plan Panel. My name is councillor Neil Walsher, as I'm actually all aware, and I'll be chairing today's meeting. So, got a few comments to make regarding the meeting and that introduction. So, just confirm that today's meeting of the Development Plan Panel is a consultative meeting. We're all online from our respective front rooms, bedrooms, offices, places of work and what have you. As you all know, the legislation wasn't renewed. That means we could have meetings where we take decisions remotely. So this is a consultative meeting. Any decisions we need to have to be ratified at a full meeting of Development Plan Panel in the future. So, we're going to do some introductions and if you can all mute your microphones, as you're all very experienced to do, once you've introduced yourself. So, we're going to go in alphabetical order because it's easier for my Can folks hear me okay?
It was breaking up a few times, Chair. It cut out a few times.
Oh, and I've just had the "your internet is unstable" message coming up. Excellent, okay. Just
Is that councillor Walsher? Is he talking out again or?
Councillor Hayden, I think his internet was just a bit dodgy. We were just about to do introductions. So, I don't know whether someone else can lead those.
Are you back now? Yes, we can.
Right. I may have stabilized my internet. Theoretically. By sending a message to everyone in the house to switch off YouTube. Right. Okay, let's try this again. So councillor Neil Walsher, I'll be chairing today's meeting. And we'll do some introductions and that starts with councillor Anderson.
Sir Barry Anderson, Adelworthdale Ward.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brooks.
Kayleigh Brooks, London and Waddell Squad.
Not sure if councillor Campbell's with us. Can't see him on my screen. So, let's have councillor Lamb.
Yeah, hello. It's councillor Alan Lamb from Weatherby Ward.
Thank you very much. Councillor Collins.
Councillor Dodd Collins, Postlethwaite.
And councillor Finnegan, I believe, is not here as yet. Councillor Gruen.
Muted Caroline.
Hello there. My name is councillor Caroline Gruen and I represent Bramley Ward. And just to explain, I have had difficulties joining with my laptop. So I'm going to leave and join again so that I can use the papers on my iPad as soon as I get the opportunity.
No worries, Caroline. Thanks very much for letting us know. Councillor Hayden.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's councillor Helen Hayden. I'm bathing in beautiful sunlight at the moment here in Temple Newsom Ward. And I'm also executive member for Infrastructure and Climate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor McKenna.
Good afternoon, all. Councillor Jim McKenna and I am an Armley councillor.
You definitely are. And councillor Taylor.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Taylor, representing Chapel Alton Ward. Can I say, I'm also having a problem with my internet. I keep dropping in and out meetings all morning, so I will disappear and come back in.
Thanks for letting us know, Eileen. This boards well, doesn't it, folks? It's just going to be one of those meetings, isn't it? No worries. We shall get along as best we can. Now, we have a whole host of officers that are joining us for the various items today. And I'm not sure I've got an exhaustive list in front of me, but let's start from the list I have there. So, Martin Elliott.
Yeah, thanks councillor. Martin Elliott, I'm head of strategic planning.
Adam Harvard.
Thank you, Chair. Adam Harvard, group manager for Policy and Plans.
Thank you. David Feeney.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm David Feeney. I'm the chief planning officer for Leeds.
I've got on my list is Philippa Promtry Varley.
Hello, Philippa Promtry Varley. Hello, principal legal officer and legal advisor to the panel this afternoon.
Thank you. Then I've got Caroline Harris.
Good afternoon, Caroline Harris, planning assistant in Policy and Plans team.
Thank you very much. Then last on my real list, I've got Ian McKay. I don't think he's with us. So, we've got, oh, Ian, you're there. Hello.
Hi, I'm. Good afternoon, everybody. Ian McKay, team leader in Policy and Plans.
Thanks very much, Ian. And we have Heather Davis.
Hi, Heather Davis, principal planning officer in Policy and Plans.
And Catherine Holloway.
Afternoon. I'm Catherine Holloway, team leader in Policy and Plans.
And Natasha.
Hello, everyone. Natasha Prase, governance officer to the panel.
Great. I think that's everybody, right?
Just to help you out, Chair, we've got Dan Golland, who's a planner within Policy and Plans. And Anup Sharma, who's a planner within Policy and Plans. They're working on the local plan update.
Thanks very much, folks. Right. What a full house we have. Glad to see you all here. Right, okay.
I'm here as well. Just out of interest, I'm here as well.
Ah, it's going so well today. Can we just start again? Right, let's move to agenda item one.
I've not received any formal apologies, but councillor Campbell and Finnegan don't appear to be here.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Agenda item number two.
Can I ask members to declare any interests? I'll take silence as no.
Excellent. Okay, thanks, Natasha. Thanks for that. So, agenda item three, minutes to the previous meeting now. We've got the 2nd of November and the 14th of December. Due to the nature of this meeting, the minutes have been attached to agenda for information only. And we were brought to the meeting in March to be formally accepted when we're a meeting person for a full meeting of DPP. But can I ask members at this point, could you, are there any issues you want to raise with either set of minutes? And then we can confirm those in March. But if anyone's got any issues with the minutes, now is the time. I don't propose to go through them page by page. I want to get on to our more substantive items, but I'll take silence for everyone's fine and dandy with the minutes. Okay, good. Right, so that takes us swiftly, neatly on to agenda item number four, which is the local plan update. Towards publication draft. So, I think really, I think rather than me to do a preamble, Adam, I'm just going to hand over to you because you've got quite a lot to go through. So
That's absolutely fine. I'm going to present my screen if that's okay. This is the first time I've done it for this meeting for a little while, so please bear with me. Hopefully it will go relatively smoothly. Can everybody see that? Okay. Excellent. Excellent. That's what we wanted to see. Yeah, so thank you, Chair. We've this is obviously a presentation related to the local plan update. And this report, can I just double check that you can see that I've changed the slides? Does that work in okay? Excellent. Okay, it seems to be going okay so far. So this presentation is intended to provide an update on the local plan update. The report itself includes four broad areas. One, the report of consultation. Two, discussion on the scope of the local plan update. Three, introducing the assessment of policy options and an update on recent government publications. So firstly, I wanted to turn to the report of consultation, which is contained at appendix one in your packs. I'm not proposing to go through this in detail. A, because members have seen the majority of this before in the presentation and papers at the November meeting as an interim update. And B, because many of the issues that are raised within it and that are presented also present themselves in later parts of this presentation, particularly for scope and for the policy options. But in summary, across the 760 representations that we received, there was strong support for the scope of the plan as proposed. And to remind members that focus is, sorry, that scope is focused on new policies to help address the climate emergencies across the five topic areas. However, as noted in November, and again in this report, it is important to recognize that alternative scopes and policy areas have been presented to us and they require consideration. And we did an element of this in November, but it's important, I think, to revisit and finalize as far as we can in this consultative meeting. So this will form the next part of the presentation. But in addition to that, it's also really important to recognize that we received many detailed comments on detailed policy matters that are helping us to develop policy options. And this will be the subject to the final part of this presentation. And obviously, following that, we're going to come on to the statement of community involvement. Okay, so the scope of the local plan update. Paragraph seven in the report onwards considers the alternative scope and scopes proposed to the plan. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail as they are given full consideration in the report. However, there are a number which may benefit from being highlighted. So firstly, as you can see on the slide, there's a list there of the alternative scopes that have been raised. And as I say, paragraph seven covers those, as does parts of the report of consultation. So, it's considered the matters such as the housing requirement and distribution, affordable housing, employment land requirements and specialized housing for older people are matters that can be and are better addressed through the local plan update too. That is primarily because they don't directly relate to the objectives of the plan, i.e. that focus on addressing the climate emergency. And given resources and the stated intention to prioritize policies for the climate emergency, it is not considered reasonable to include these policy areas within the scope of the local plan update. That is not to say that they don't have some relevance to it. It's certainly not to say that they're not really important issues. With regard to blue infrastructure, as referenced in November and debates that we had before the publication of the consultation material, blue infrastructure, we believe should have more primacy in the plan. And there are references in the plan already, both in the flood risk and the green infrastructure sections. But a number of consultees feel that those references do need to be elevated. And that's something, as I said, that we've discussed before. And we would agree in principle with that, subject to the relevant sustainability appraisals considerations being undertaken. But we think that would neatly fit as a combined green and blue infrastructure topic paper and topic. And I feel that that would be how that could be accommodated. Clearly, it could also be accommodated in flood risk, so there's perhaps a little bit of a debate there. But we feel that that can be accommodated within a revised scope of the plan without making too much in the way of alterations. The second issue, which is related to the declaration of the climate emergency, is what has been raised to us as the ecological emergency. And as described in the report, it is considered that many aspects of the ecological emergency are already well within the scope of the plan and already well considered within the plan, such as nature conservation, biodiversity, place making, flood risk, amongst many others. So it's not thought necessary that to add the term ecological emergency to the scope of the plan. But instead, stronger referencing to the ecological emergency could be made within the plan of future policies. So we're not proposing to add it to the scope because we feel it's already in principle within it. We don't, we're not proposing to add it as a topic paper in its own right. But we do feel it's important that it perhaps is given more recognition within the material for the next round of consultation and perhaps in policies as we write them. The last consideration on this slide is heritage assets. And just to be absolutely clear, this emerged from a comment made by Historic England with specific reference to Leeds historic mill buildings. But we do think it raises a wider issue of the interrelationship between modern construction standards, which have a focus on low carbon operation and construction on the one hand, but also the preservation of buildings that may, in theory, struggle to meet such standards on the other hand. So we consider it is reasonable to reflect this issue within further iterations of the plan to ensure that we are giving due regard to heritage assets and their cultural and historic benefits to Leeds and to make sure that we don't, I suppose accidentally, perhaps the wrong word, but without due care and attention, I suppose, allow policies to put at risk that important cultural and historic assets that we have in Leeds. So the issues raised is mill buildings. We think it's broader than that. And that's how we describe it in the report. The next slide is obviously a continuation and it shows again another list of the alternative scopes that proposed. And as I say, I'm not proposing to go through all of these, but try and pull out some examples. They are all, everything that's on this slide is covered within the report. And obviously happy to take comments and questions on anything that I'm not covering verbally now. The next one, I think, that I'm going to pull out is the comments related to health equity and reducing other inequalities. As the report hopefully makes clear, it is hoped and expected that the local plan update will contribute to reducing inequalities and expect that that will be the case. And there may be benefits in including strengthening wording with regard to these, particularly with the obvious linkages with place making and green infrastructure. There's already a really clear focus on health in the place making chapter and obvious linkages in the green infrastructure section as well. However, yeah, so it could be considered that we can make more strength, sorry, stronger references to health equity and other inequalities if considered necessary. But we don't consider it necessary to alter the scope to add sort of health equity to necessarily be a clear objective of the plan, given how it's already dealt with. Another issue is that of electric vehicle charging points. And this was raised in particular from a consultancy who was the issue of areas of off-street parking and how they could access electric vehicle, vehicle charging points. And as reflected in the, in the report, we do already have up-to-date policies in general on electric charging points. And it's, I think it's important that any reconsideration of that doesn't unpick what are very hard-won policies, but instead helps us to move further forward. So I think we will consider, so what the report makes clear, I hope, is that we will consider aspects of electric vehicle charging points in the next iteration of the plan. But I just wanted to note, raise that note of caution that what we don't want to do is lose the progress that we've already made on electric vehicle charging points and make sure that we can just move forward on that. So if we can help to look at off-street parking issues, which are challenging for planning because so many of them don't require planning approval, particularly where it's in existing built-up areas. But obviously, we'll try and look at that as far as we can. Next, and I suppose finally, in terms of me pulling out examples, is that of soils. And it is considered that this does fall within the scope of the plan. So we will consider over the next few weeks how we can incorporate that into the plan, subject to sustainability appraisal. So, as members could see there, you know, there are further scope considerations on the slides and detailed in the report, which I haven't gone through verbally. This slide here repeats the proposed final scope of the plan, which is contained within the report. I won't read this out, but I can leave it on the screen for consideration. And Chair, I wonder if now is a good time to pause to take comments and questions on the scope and the report of consultation, or whether we could go straight to the, to kind of the consideration of policy options. Your hands ready?
Yeah, it's a good point. Well, we'll put that to colleagues. Has anyone got any questions you want to raise now? Or do we want to press on through? Councillor Anderson, I can see you've indicated.
Do you mean you want comments on what's been said so far?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I preface what I'm about to say in that I think we've got to move this forward as quickly as possible. And any discussions or arguments that we have is actually only delaying reaching a lot of the objectives that we would like to reach. That said, where it's, where the first one was about the plan should reassess the housing requirement and its spatial distribution. I'd make five, six, six points, I think it is altogether. There's been no men, I mean, in terms of how this would affect climate change. Well, the amount of travelling, the travel distances that people will need to travel in some cases will make it very, very difficult. And as the Chair and I and a number of others are on CAC, these are the sort of issues that we're having to review. The city centre developers in the main are trying to come up with solutions. They are trying to come up with volunteering to do so, whereas some of the other developers out there are making no great effort to comply in the spirit of what we've got, even though we've not actually got the policies in place. And I think if you look to the distribution of those, there's also the effect on trees and biodiversity in terms of, in some of these areas that were, that are green field, if I can put them like that, that make it, the damage that's been, the environmental damage. There's also the need to invest in local infrastructure. But there's also, I would suggest, that there's the need to invest in a lot of city centre, inner-city locations. And we can't do both. We can't do both. And public, public transport, there is no great plans in the short term to improve public transport in certain parts of the city. It's going to take years and years and years, depending where we go through a public inquiry. And then the final thing is connectivity to nearby facilities. Even if we were to build some of those, some people won't have access to services that they need quickly. Doctors, for example. So they're going to have to travel to some of those. And that will all add overall to the carbon footprint of people. But as I say, I have prefaced at the beginning, I think in overall terms, we've got to go ahead with this. But I just wanted to make that point, that that was the logic behind why that point was being made originally.
Sure, yeah, I think speaking to the point you've raised, councillor Anderson, I think, for example, the the desire to bring infrastructure together and into things like 20-minute neighbourhoods will be an added extra compulsion to agglomerate what we need to see in those kind of neighbourhoods. I think that's to the good. I think when we look on the detailed policy, I think a lot of you, your questions are going to be answered. But yeah, the points were made then. I think, like I said, I think we'll probably cover them of course at this session. Councillor Gruen and then councillor Campbell.
Thanks, Chair. Just a few comments on, on my first reading through of this, I found myself questioning the nature of the consultation. Because at face value, we appear to have rejected all but two of the suggestions made. And I just wondered, you know, how much of a consultation that actually was. Although I do accept that officers have said they'll put more emphasis in certain parts on those things that were suggested. And my own view about the ecological emergency item is that actually, I would probably have come down on the other side of that decision and agreed to have it named as part of the scope of the report. I do think it's important and I can, I accept that it can be addressed in the green infrastructure part, but I feel that it's so important and the word emergency for me stands out. I personally would argue for that to be included as part of the scope. And I agree with the decisions that have been made about the blue infrastructure and the soils. I just want to make one comment on electric charging. I think it's too specific to have named as one of the parts of the scope as a separate section. But I don't think we have anything like the knowledge or the expertise or the infrastructure to know what we're doing with electric charging. So to suggest that we already have policies which are adequate, I think is probably not the case. Having tried to manage a hybrid car even, let alone a fully electric car, I really don't think we have the knowledge to, of understanding just what needs to be provided to enable people to use these vehicles on a permanent basis. Thank you, Chair.
No, thanks for that. I think just, I mean, officers might want to come in, but just on that last point, I'm the EV stuff, I think, for example, on street, the very strong steer from the automotive industry is to is for municipalities broadly to not, to not overly concern themselves with on-street charging because they see super ultra-rapid charging at more sensible locations. Do you know what I mean? So petrol stations becoming rapid-charging areas, rapid-charging appearing at all sorts of drive-ins, that kind of thing. So that's where they tend to see that. I don't know if officers want to come in on that. But perhaps before you do, actually, if I just bring councillor Campbell's last elected member who's indicated to speak on this section, if I bring Colin in and then Adam could speak to any of the points he wants to have been raised.
Sorry, I'm slightly delayed. And can I say I agree with Caroline about the ecological emergency? I think actually it is, things are bad and getting worse. And if I look at the planning permissions we give at Northern, none of them are doing much towards dealing with that bigger issue, so.
Colin, if I'm into Jack, I don't know, I'm having real trouble hearing you, sorry.
I'll hold the microphone as near to my mouth as I possibly can. Is that all right?
Thank you.
Is that better?
No.
Not much, no.
I'm doing my best. It's the system. So I'll shout. I agree with Caroline about the ecological emergency. I think we should have that as a separate item and I think we need to have policies in place. Quickly on the city centre developers, I've said for some time that in many ways we subsidize city centre developers because we don't expect them to provide the range of infrastructure, particularly car parking, that we expect in the outer areas. And we should, in my opinion, levy them to fund the public transport network. Finally, EV charging. I'm with you on this, Chair. I think we, the initial response was, everybody's going to want to put their car in at home. But not everybody carries petrol in their garage anymore. And I think it will sort itself out in that new build, as we already know, we have a policy. I've suggested that we include, expand that policy to include major extensions. So people who have the famous two-bedroom rear and single-story side extension, at the same time, we suggest they put in a charging point. And I think the on-street one is complex because as you've said, you don't need to charge your car every day. And I can foresee in my part of the world endless battles between people who parked in an electric charging bay outside their house but are not charging a car. And so I think it's a case of, maybe we should wait and see. And I wonder why we would have a specific section which relates to charging a particular type of vehicle. I'll just throw that in as a side because I thought about it when you were talking. Right? Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, thanks councillor Campbell. I think before I bring Adam in, I think regarding the ecological emergency, I agree as well. I think that needs to be in its, in a separate section. I think that could be thinking in particular of plans chairs and plans panel members, I think, and indeed officers before they get to the panel scenario. I think that could be an important lever for biodiversity gain and it will sit within quite a strong range of policies as we're going to see. But it adds that the added power of the emergency lever, so to speak. I think that would be, that'd be, that'd be rather important. So, given those comments, Adam, do you want, or Martin, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I'll come back on that, Chair. And we're absolutely, yeah, we hear members loud and clear on the ecological emergency, you know, if it is the view of members that we should be having that as a most more elevated stated ambition, which is given, given more primacy, we can absolutely incorporate that. Obviously, we've set out reasons why we think that that's, may not be necessary, but that's it's obviously a very, sort of quite a close argument, isn't it? And it's very clear that it, either way, that it's clearly very relevant. So we can definitely incorporate that into the scope. That's not an issue. Just in terms of the EV charging point, well, actually, if I go back to the councillor Gruen's first point about the scope and concerns that have we dismissed an awful lot of what was raised through the consultation? And just to, just to clarify, I mean, the scope question was really one question out of about, I think it was 45. It was the first question though, and it was the one that, that in terms of the regulations, it was probably the most important question because the question in the regulations is, what is the purpose of, what is the subject, I think is the correct word, what is the subject of this plan? And what should the policies of that subject contain? So in a sense, that scope question is about the subject of the plan and what should that subject be? But there are an awful lot of comments, which I think we're going to start to go through through the second part of this presentation that weren't related to the scope, but were related to detailed policy issues, detailed policy questions that were raised. So whilst some of these ideas for alternative scopes have been discounted for this, this plan, I don't think any of the ideas raised have been discounted out of hand. Rather, they need to be reconsidered as part of local plan update too, and any future, future plans as well. In terms of the EV charging point, it's a very specific question that was raised to us in terms of that off-street parking, absolutely. But it was, I raised it under the scope section just because at the moment, we don't cover electric vehicles overtly within the scope. So it was, I felt that it was almost a window in, I suppose, in terms of should we reconsider having electric vehicles as part of that scope, that was why it was raised. Obviously, in terms of the specifics, the issues that councillors have raised, we're obviously working within the limitations of the planning system to a degree. We can obviously provide new electric vehicle charging points as part of new development. But the planning system can't deliver them as part of anything else. So in terms of plans for new electric vehicle charging points that are delivered by private operators, and obviously they might require planning permission, but they're not an addition to a residential development, for instance. But councillor Campbell's point about how we deal with large extensions and whether they should be included within the scope is definitely a fair consideration and something we can certainly take away and work up in more detail. And just to say, in terms of councillor Anderson's original points, I think there's a lot of these policies that are within scope are going to be very influential in terms of new housing and a lot of the sustainability issues that he raises. And I appreciate he's, has he made clear, he's not keen to enter into a debate about it for time's sake. But I think hopefully that all these policies are going to have a low carbon adaptation slant to them, which will hopefully make improvements, even without looking at the overall housing requirement. I think David's got his hand up.
Yeah, I just seen, yeah, David, please.
Thank you Chair, thank you Adam. It was just to say, Chair, that I think in relation to the points about EV charging and transport, and public transport improvement more generally, just to flag, we had the council's new connecting leads transport strategy, didn't we, at the end of last year? And I think that the trick here will be to make sure that the policies we can bring forward in the local plan update are amplifying and reinforcing aspects of that strategy through planning and making sure that in the transport strategy, where they're taking the lead on particular projects or programmes, in the infrastructure section within the local plan update, there's almost a cross reference to that as well, so that the two documents together are reinforcing the council's overall ambitions and the sort of the carbon reduction and the public transport. So I think there's an interface there between the two documents. And we're well engaged with colleagues within highways. So we see this really as an iterative process in linking the two things together, but making sure that they're mutually reinforcing in enabling us to deliver the policies and programmes that we need. Thank you Chair.
Thanks David, that's really helpful. I think, I'm not seeing any more folks wanting to speak, so let's crack on to the next section, Adam, yeah?
I've got councillor Campbell with his hand up, I don't know if that's.
I'm thinking it's a leftover.
Leftover, yeah.
That's absolutely fine, so I'll move on to the next section, hopefully you can still see the presentation okay. Please let me know if not. So finalising the scope, and I appreciate this meeting cannot do that, but making agreements on what the scope should be enables us to effectively move forward on developing policies. And the consultation allowed us to bring together a range of consultees suggestions with ideas that officers were already considering as well. So there's a good matchup there. And obviously, we've got a legal duty to explore and test alternatives before arriving at our preferred options for policies. And this is how we demonstrate the policies that we've written are sustainable and are appropriate and sound. Before we can do that though, we need to fully understand those range of options we have. And obviously, the consultation's really helped us with that. But explore how reasonable those options are, what benefits they bring, and whether they meet with the objectives of the plan. And so once unreasonable options can be discounted, we can then start to test options through the sustainability appraisal process, as I say, as required by the regulation and law. But at this stage, we're exploring the full suite of options as a whole. And the following sort of element of the presentation is designed to highlight certain areas of that. And I should stress that we could spend an afternoon going through just one topic area with this. There are so many different policy options and so many different policy areas. But in the interest of time, what follows is a bit of a limited consideration of certain policy, particular policy areas. It shouldn't be considered exhaustive, there are far more options that we, there's time for us to go through today. We're in the middle of compiling evidence and we're working through all the options as comprehensively as we can. And our intention is to bring this back for fuller consideration at the next meeting of DPP. So hopefully that's clear to members. What I'll do now then is I'll hand over to Dan Golland, who's going to take us through those elements of the carbon reduction topic that he's going to highlight for us. So I'll hand over to Dan.
Hi, good afternoon everyone. Could you just move on to the next slide, if that's okay? Thank you. To refresh your memory on the objective of the carbon reduction element of the local plan update, we aim to minimise energy demand, meet all demands for heat and power without decreasing carbon emissions. We believe we can achieve this through requiring new development to measure carbon emissions across the whole life cycle of a building, introducing sustainable construction standards for new development and promoting renewable and low carbon energy. A few key policy options explored through the consultation are as follows, next slide please. For whole life cycle carbon assessment, one option was to only require applications to consider the whole life cycle carbon development. Another option is to acquire assessments to be submitted until 2026 or another variation on that date. But after that date, required development to meet a set benchmark of figures. This approach will allow transitional period before targets are set. And that was highlighted as a potential concern by developers through the consultation. We also need to consider which methodology and benchmarks to use, such as methodology currently required in the London, for the London local London Plan, or science-based method which was put forward through the consultation. Another option is not introduce new policy and rely on national guidance and other local plan policies. However, if we do introduce whole life cycle carbon assessments, we'll need to consider whether it's for all applications or only for larger significant schemes, as the developers emphasise this is a concern again through the consultation. The second topic area is operational carbon. The key options explored through the consultation were to, whether to acquire net zero carbon buildings for all applications or potentially gradual improvements over the plan period. Again, another option is to rely on national changes to policy and building regulations only. A variation of this policy would allow carbon offsetting when development could not meet our proposed standards. We'd have to identify criteria which would allow this offsetting and a methodology to calculate it. Again, we have to consider if this approach applies to certain types of development. Whether it applies to all residential, commercial, certain size of applications or even geographic locations. Can you move to the next slide please, thank you. The next area was sustainable construction standards. One option was to require developments to meet a certain nationally prescribed standard, such as BIAAM or the Home Quality Mark or Passive House etc. Another option was for the council to create its own bespoke standards. Although this was not supported through the consultation, with developers wanting national consistency and also concerns about in-house knowledge and skill developer and standards within the local plan update timeframe. Again, another option is to leave to national policy changes and building regulations in 2025. Future building standards may come in, which changes the building regs. And this is an option put forward by developers and favoured by them. And resilience to heat, two options were explored. And one was to either adopt the policy or rely on changes to building regulations again. I think recently, there's been amendments for ventilation and overheating. This area could be covered by other areas, such as construction standards, where, for example, BIAAM considers thermal comfort as part of their assessment. However, the consultation highlighted that good designs, such as green walls and green roofs and the building placement and fabric first, could also mitigate the impact of heat. So this resilience to heat can be delivered through other topic areas of the local plan updates, such as green infrastructure and place making. For renewable energy, two areas which were explored were to allocate land for certain renewable energy types or create new policies that guides development. There is also the option to join to new renewable energy target, as we currently have one within the natural resources and waste plan, which I think is nearly out of date, which is generally supported, although it needed to be realistic and aspirational. A key part of evidence required to do this would be opportunity area mapping for renewable energy types, which would also include a scoping for energy storage, to give an idea of the renewable energy potential for Leeds and the locations of that area. So those are some key findings, and I think we move on now to flood risks.
Thanks Dan, yeah, and you've reminded me as well that, as you highlighted in that presentation, there have been very recently some changes in building regulations as they relate to things like ventilation and heating, but also electric vehicles as well, and electric vehicle charging points. That came just before Christmas, I think it's fair to say we haven't quite wrapped our head around the technicalities of that. But I think in time for the next meeting of the Development Plans Panel, we can do a more comprehensive view on what those changes to building regulations mean, also combined with some evidence work that we're preparing with the Climate Commission in terms of the implications of different measures as against building regulations. And hopefully that will be helpful for members in terms of our ongoing work with policies. So I'll go through the flood risk sections. And just to remind members, as stated in the consultation material, our vision is that Leeds will ensure that new developments are located and designed to avoid, reduce and mitigate flood risk, increase biodiversity and reduce the carbon footprint of risk reduction schemes through natural flood solutions. We're working through the policy options now, obviously. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of areas where options present themselves. And as I say, this shouldn't be considered exhaustive. But the first area relates to avoiding development in flood risk areas. And it's very headline options, as Dan introduced this idea of not having a policy, which is always an option, we've got to, members shouldn't be alarmed by that. It's just in terms of when we do our assessments, we do need to make sure that relative to the baseline of doing nothing, that we're seeing improvements by having a policy. And obviously, that, I'm sure members can understand that. But, so don't be alarmed when you see us saying having no policy. That's just how we go through the options appraisal process. So obviously, not having a policy is an option. But also, whether we should have a policy which restricts developments in high flood risk areas or not. But drilling down in a bit more detail, we need to consider what a potential policy could say. An additional options on there are related to restricting all developments in high flood risk areas, regardless of whether a sequential test can be passed. Restricting more vulnerable, such as residential and highly vulnerable, such as gypsy and traveller sites, uses in flood risk areas, regardless of whether a sequential test can be passed with only less vulnerable uses, such as employment could be permitted in flood risk areas, provided the sequential test is passed in those cases. Or we could, and you know, some of these aren't mutually exclusive, I should say. But another option is to restrict accommodation for elderly and disabled people in high flood risk areas. And this would be treating elderly and disabled accommodation as highly vulnerable use because of potential mobility issues and their impact on safe evacuation. Or it could be a more nuanced approach, which considered flood zone categorisation as a means of deciding whether other measures should be brought in. And I guess for these options to be, we need to consider whether it is reasonable to go beyond the provisions of the national policy. So the MPPF introduces these ideas about sequential and exceptions test. If we were to remove them in local policy, that would obviously be going beyond the MPPF. So we need to consider whether that's a reasonable option or not in order to minimise flood risk in Leeds. Secondly, we've got managing surface water in the flood risk topic. So for managing surface water, again, we have the same headline policy option of not having any new policies. But two other policy options, which are not mutually exclusive, of having new policy to increase the use of SUDs, which is very strongly supported by consultees, and/or whether to also implement natural flood risk management measures at source locations to manage surface water runoff. So within that, there are also additional variations, such as requiring all development to, an option could be requiring all development to incorporate SUDs or to indicate the areas where we expect SUDs are most appropriate and most effective. Or whether to apply new policies on SUDs to just major developments or to development, including both miners and householders as well as major development. And finally, on flood risk, I've just pulled out resilience. And for resilience, we've got two broad headline options, excuse me, sorry. Whether to have a new policy to set new standards for flood resilience in new developments. So that would be defining what is meant by safe access and egress, defining evacuation routes and resilient construction. Or the other broad option is to rely on existing local and national policy, which was advocated by some consultees, particularly the development industry through the consultation. Within the option of having a new policy, there are obviously further options, again, of setting out the requirement for new development to be able to, yeah, an example might be setting out, should development have to recover quickly after a flood? And how quickly, what that would look like. We could also set different standards depending on the type of development proposed, so be it housing, employment, commercial or educational establishments, and that relates, I think, to the vulnerabilities that I raised in the slightly earlier. Within that, there could be potential variations for applying a policy based on an area's current flood zone or to apply to areas that will have flood risk in the future as a result of climate change. And you'll hopefully remember that we introduced this idea, certainly that came out of the consultation from the Environment Agency about us having a much longer consideration of flood risk, and which goes beyond national policy at present. So that's just a pot of highlights of the flood risk considerations. I'll hand over to Anna and Heather, who are going to give us some examples they're exploring as part of the green infrastructure topic.
Thanks Adam, I think I'm going first. Okay, can I have the next slide please? So here's just a quick reminder of the overall vision for the green infrastructure section. So it's Leeds will create new infrastructure, including green space and natural environment through the planning process and identify, improve, protect and extend existing GI to address the challenges of climate change and create a healthy city. So the natural environment has a key part to play in tackling climate change and local plan policy must facilitate, support and maximise the various ways nature can help to rebalance climate and wider environmental systems. With this in mind, the overall approach that we've been taking is to build on the existing policy framework set up prior to the declaration of a climate emergency and strengthen it so it is fit for purpose to help tackle climate change. And there are four key elements to this. Better protect the green infrastructure we already have, improve the quality, value and multifunctionality of it, ensure any losses are replaced and expand the existing network of GI and create new links. So the overall aim is to maximise the assets and benefits of the natural environment and in GI particularly, in tackling climate change. Can I have the next slide please? So in the green infrastructure chapter, there was focuses on six key topics. That's the identification, protection, enhancement and extension of green infrastructure, trees, green space, nature conservation, biodiversity and local food production. So we received some really interesting and some useful comments on these during the consultation. And I'll focus on a couple of key issues within the trees and biodiversity topics. Then Anna will raise a couple of further issues within green space and food production. So firstly, replacement of trees lost. The current policy land two seeks a minimum of three to one replacement of trees lost due to development. This ratio could be increased with appropriate evidence, obviously to justify any new figure. Or another numerical method could be used, for example, planting being proportional to the number of houses built, which was a suggestion we received during the consultation. Alternatively, a method based on retaining or even increasing carbon sequestration levels could be appropriate. And the University of Leeds, the United Bank of Carbon have devised a method to achieve this, which could be incorporated into policy and guidance. Trees are incredibly multifunctional, from storing carbon to intercepting rainwater, from providing shade to providing habitats and biodiversity. So a method to assess, quantify, balance and protect all these would require a much broader evidence base, including a methodology for measuring the wider benefits over and above carbon sequestration and biodiversity. There is clearly a wealth of general evidence on the benefits of trees already. However, this would need to be incorporated into a method which could quantify benefits. However, this would need to be incorporated into a method which could quantify benefits. Increasing tree cover. So certainly, tree planting is widely supportive and there's many initiatives and programs already delivering on the ground. Planning policy currently supports this. However, an improved policy could do more. Such as explicitly support these initiatives. And I'm thinking particularly of the White Rose Forest Initiative. It could seek planting in specific locations such as green space or even allocate sites for planting. A clear methodology and assessment process would be required to identify suitable, justifiable sites or sites for planting. And finally, for me, just biodiversity net gain. As I'm sure you're all aware, the Environment Act establishes the requirement for net gain in biodiversity. And sets a minimum figure of 10% and it's worth noting that that is the minimum figure. This is expected to become mandatory in 2023 after a two-year transition period. So with this in mind, we need to consider what is an appropriate level of net gain for Leeds. And particularly whether this is the legal minimum 10% or higher. During the consultation, the development industry were very supportive of the minimum 10%. However, other consultees supported higher levels. Any level above 10% will need to be based on robust and comprehensive evidence. Therefore, we will need to establish a process to assess all factors. Including the viability implications of a higher percentage target. It is worth noting that obviously viability would not be a factor if net gain was just set at 10%. So I'll hand over to Anna to do his bit now.
Hello, councillors. As Heather pointed out, I'm going to look at two of the issues. Which are one in the area of green space, one in food production. Should state as Adam clearly identified, there's a massive amount of information in green infrastructure. As they're in all the areas. So these are just two, two small items that are pulling out for your consideration. So the first example is to do with green space in the city centre. And if you remember, I'm sure you do remember, it was one of the. Specific questions within the consultation. It should be stated at this stage that the. There was considerable support for greater levels of green space in the city centre in the consultation. With some reservations from the development industry, but even then, the support of the idea. Where they favored a more strategic approach, direct green space where it needed to go the most. So I'm just going to have to give a bit background to this. I'm sorry to people who already know, but we have basically two policies. For development of green space in the development plan. One of them is G4, which is outside the city centre. One of them is G5, which is within the city centre. Both these policies are, if you like, structured into two. One is a trigger, which. Figures the policy and one is how we do the calculation, how much green space we demand from that development. And each of these are different. So in G5 and G4, both calculations and the triggers are different. Another important factor is to remember why we ask for green space. Green space is about burden. If there is a bit of green space near to one of your wards. And you've got 100 people using it regularly and someone builds a great big 400 house development nearby. Then that's added pressure on the green space, which the green space might not be able to take. So we demand that residential developments. Develop green space to take this extra burden of people. That's a very important point. That is the foundation of why we create green space. So the problem is with having two calculations inside and outside the city centre is that two resultant. Figures are given. So within the space of 100 metres, two equivalent developments. May request green space of up to a ratio of four to one. And that means that outside the city centre, you may be asking for four square metres. Inside the city centre, you might be asking for one square metre. And so we've got a disconnect, if you like, above a boundary, city centre boundary of the amount of green space we have for. The second issue is a trigger under G4, this is straightforward, it's 10 houses. Under G5, the trigger is whether the site area of the development is 0.5 of a hectare. Just for information, 0.5 of a hectare is a square area of land about 70 metres by 70 metres. Or if you prefer feet, it's 233 feet by 233 feet. So a 20-storey development of 300 units, which may have a capacity of. 600 people. So imagine a tower block in the city centre having 600 people. But let's say it's placed on a site of 0.49 hectares will not be obliged to provide any green space. Whatsoever at the current time. So with that in mind, the possible options, and these are just possible options, stay as we are. Abolish G5 totally. I don't have something different for the city centre and just have G4. Or investigate and change where and as is appropriate. So these are just some of the options we can go down. And obviously, you know, it's a long way to go in the process. We must also also recognize that all our policies must join up and dovetail. And as well as. Greening the city might be about G5 and green space. Through development, there's other things like green walls, green roofs. And how we design our open spaces, other green initiatives, roof gardens. So there are other ways we can reduce the urban heat island effect and make our city centre more attractive. The next area I'm going to briefly talk about is food production. And there's quite a lot in this. I mean, as you're aware, if we buy our vegetables from Australia. Then there's huge travel costs and huge harm to the environment, et cetera. So there's quite a lot of different areas from community gardens, micro orchards, allotments. But there was one option which really caught our attention. And that came through the consultation process. And that was very simply for new residential development to have a trigger on a garden size. Above which a fruit tree has to be planted in it, a design requirement. It's something that was put in and it sort of caught our attention as a simple, but maybe, you know, for for the council to decide, an effective idea. So if you have a large development of, say, 100 houses with 100 big gardens. Them 100 gardens will have 100 trees in them. This will give localized food, i.e. food. A healthy food source, local, no transport, genuinely fresh. It'll reconnect people with nature. Now, Adam said in the introduction, this idea about healthy equity. There's a huge amount of evidence out there about reconnecting with nature, being beneficial to mental health. Obviously, fresh fruit is healthy as well. But actually making people, children in particular, I'm thinking that, you know, trees don't come from, sorry, fruit doesn't come from supermarkets. It comes from trees. Reconnect them with nature in a very physical and tangible way. I quite like the idea of that. Also, as Heather has pointed out, trees provide carbon sequestration, they're more attractive. They reduce urban heat tile effect, they're massively beneficial in renaturalization. Biodiversity, going back to Adam's idea of flood risk, the aid to sustainable drainage. And again, as I've already said, health equity. They provide a really good source of mental and physical health. So we thought that was quite a nice idea. And again, that is something almost presented before you. For consideration as quite a unique and novel idea. Within the scope of the topic of food production. And I hope, yeah, that's it from me. I'll hand back over to Adam.
Thanks, Anna, and thanks, Heather, as well. I will hand straight over to Catherine, who's going to be looking through placemaking.
If you can move to the next slide, please. I'll just refresh members on the overall vision for placemaking, which is both set at the strategic. And down to the site-specific level. So the objective was to minimize carbon emissions by. Guiding new development to locations that offer the best opportunity for active travel. For use of public transport and for minimal use of the private motor vehicles. To capitalize upon local communities' assets, inspiration and potential to create high-quality, sustainable and resilient places. That people want to live, work and play in and promote people's health, happiness and wellbeing. Move on to the next slide. So it won't come as much of a surprise that this topic wasn't too controversial. Hopefully, I'll run quite quickly through some of the headlines for both the strategic and then move on to the design elements of placemaking. And these do pick up in parts of the comments that members have already made today. So emerging out of the issues and optional consultation around strategic. Were concerns on how far we can address the 20-minute neighbourhood concept. In Leeds, given that we've got a diverse urban and rural communities. And that there won't be a one-size-fits-all approach and issues around flexibility and potential policy conflicts. Where our existing sequential approach for town centre uses was also raised. There was a clear split between those favoring car-free development balanced against those raising that we shouldn't become an anti-car city. And other suggestions, particularly by the development industry, sought the additional scoping of policies around growth provision. Promoting in their part, the rural development, supporting sustainability and 20-minute concept of rural villages. And I think in part this highlights the comment that Councilman Anderson made earlier around the equity of provision and accessibility of services and facilities. So moving on to the emerging policy options for strategic placemaking. And the first is the baseline position of we do nothing. We rely on the existing local and national policy, particularly in reference to the definition of sustainable development. Or we alter our existing policies. And in this case, it's focused around strategic policy one. Our policies on H2 and EC1, which are our sort of policies for windfall development. Around housing and employment and T2 around accessibility criteria. To look at clarifying the ambitions, expectations and requirements of those policies. On where new windfall development goes. And or to introduce a new policy addressing criteria for a 20-minute neighbourhood. So considerations within these options include to what degree do we want to detail a 20-minute neighbourhood. Looking at the flexibility of different geographies of Leeds and the resolution of potential policy conflict with our existing sequential approach to town centre uses. As well as looking at the role of our current policies on density and mix. Similarly, as raised earlier under flood risk is the need to ensure our policies on locational growth sit side by side. So how does a sequential approach to flood risk balance with a sustainable 20-minute neighbourhood location, particularly in the city centre or the urban area? And one last point to pick out today on this is the clear relationship between placemaking and the connecting lead strategy. Already points that have been raised on provision of public transport, including mass transit. And I'll come on to that when I do a quick run for you on the sustainable infrastructure section. I'll put my teeth back in as well. So if you want to move on to the next slide, move on to the design place. And this is sort of down to the site-specific level. Clearly, the publication of the MPPF visions last summer alongside the National Model Design Code. Has significantly placed supporting emphasis on this topic area. And whilst not wanting to get back into the debate of what does good look like. There was a lot of support for this topic area with a recognition that there's a lot of crossover with the other local plan. Update topic areas as already discussed. So emerging headline policy options is the do nothing again approach, relying on our existing local and national policy. And particularly the strength for our existing SPDs, neighbourhoods for living and building for today, tomorrow. We can alter our existing design policies of GP5 and P10. Clarifying again the ambitions, the expectations, the requirements, the strengthening of references to climate change, high quality, resilience. Adaptability and healthy places. We could also look at the introduction of a new strategic policy on high-quality, resilient or healthy places, or other word. And we could provide a hook for new detailed policy or policies on design. Policy option variations, including the introduction of design codes, either at citywide, local or site. And health checks. So the interrelationships here is key between the other local plan update one topics. As placemaking at the site level considers the buildings, the architecture and design and the spaces around them. So policy options already mentioned around whole life cycle, carbon emissions, sustainable construction, resilience to heat. Connections to renewable energy, heat networks and the energy storage. Designing in sustainable drainage and flood risk resilience, as well as the issues around green infrastructure. That Heather and Anna have touched upon, trees, the hedges, green walls, roofs, green space, nature connection, biodiversity, local food production. And then, of course, access to active travel, public transport, including mass transit, digital connectivity. All need the relevant cross-references and hooks within a placemaking topic and make sure that that's connected. And then lastly, just on this topic, it's just to note that we're working really closely with public health colleagues. To ensure alignment with the health and wellbeing strategy and also with transport policies. To ensure alignment with connecting lead strategy and associated work. So that's a one from placemaking. And then I think we want to cover sustainable infrastructure as well, don't we? So we'll just review the vision for sustainable infrastructure on the next slide, nice and short. Leeds will ensure the delivery of an accessible and integrated transport and communication system. Which focuses on public transport and active travel. Next slide, please. So HS2 and Leeds Station, the issues and optional consultation proposed that local plan update would address HS2 in the Leeds Station. And at the time of publication, there was uncertainty about the future of HS2. But we recognized that we needed to be on the front foot if it did go ahead. A wide range of comments were received, which were generally very supportive of the principle of a policy on this topic. Though quite rightly, many people did flag up the uncertainty of HS2. And also expressed differing views about the merits of HS2 in itself. They noted the importance of other rail improvement schemes such as the Northern Powerhouse Rail. And they also made a number of specific comments and suggestions about the detailed content of such policy. Since the issues and optional consultation ended, there has been a significant change in the context. And with the Integrated Rail Plan published in November of last year. And that confirmed that there is no longer intended that HS2 line will reach Leeds. So as we worked through the consultation responses. And considered the implications of Integrated Rail Plan, the headline policy options have emerged, which includes relying on our existing policies. Or perhaps preparing an SPD, developing a new policy that focuses just on Leeds Station. Creating a new policy that considers the station alongside other strategic rail upgrades in a more general sense. Which could be based on some of the learning from working through the HS2 proposals. And then some responses also suggested the policy shouldn't just focus on Leeds Station. But also consider existing or potentially new outline stations. There is then a range of sub-options in terms of what the exact content of such policy would be, what it would cover and what it would require. This includes looking at design principles and requirements, such as supporting a second southern entrance. Improving integration between the station and other modes of transport. And looking at improvements to places like the Dark Arches and Neville Street. And thinking more generally about improvements to rail infrastructure or the provision of new lines. A policy could set out the principles that such infrastructure will be expected to meet. In relation to matters such as provision of green infrastructure, permeability, flood risk, heritage, temporary uses, diadochs, et cetera, et cetera. This could be based on a lot of the learning, again, we've learned from planning for HS2. And it could also potentially look beyond Leeds Station, as I've said, and plan for new stations or improvements to other existing stations in around the city. Again, working really closely with colleagues in transport policy as we work through these options to ensure alignment with connecting lead strategy. There's going to be a need for some flexibility as the Integrated Rail Plan refers to future studies being undertaken to look at capacity issues at Leeds City Station. And longer-term prospects to bring HS2 trains to the city. We don't have clarity at this moment on those timescales. Whilst we might not want to wait for this to be completed before developing a new policy, we'd need to ensure that a policy isn't quickly dated. Next slide, please. So mass transit. Overall, through the consultation, there's a good level of support for this policy in principle. Again, a number of responses did question the need for mass transit, whether it will be delivered. Again, we've got three headline policy options, the baseline do nothing, relying instead on existing local and national policy. Or alternatively, we could develop a West Yorkshire-wide policy for WICA. Or we could delay the preparation of a policy until there's more certainty. We could develop a new policy addressing the development of mass transit in Leeds. Or we could develop a new policy which focuses on public transport improvements more generally, either alongside or instead of mass transit. And again, there are sub-options, including things such as how mass transit relates to the development strategy more broadly. And this overlaps with placemaking policy. It relates to patterns of development and the density of development around stops. Other suggestions include design issues, establishing placemaking, design principles for the route and stops. And addressing how it's integrated into places it travels through and ensuring safe, active travel to and from stops. Could also seek to maximize the potential for mass transit to deliver improvements to biodiversity, green infrastructure, sustainable drainage or route. As you'd expect, we're still working closely with transport policy to make sure that the alignment with connecting the strategy. And with WICA, who is also undertaking a lot of work at the moment to develop the evidence base for mass transit. And it's hoped that that evidence base will coincide with the next option development stage. There are issues in terms of the time scales whilst a mass, whilst, I'll put my teeth back in. Whilst a mass transit policy in this local planner update could provide the high-level support. This may need to be supplemented by further policy in the future that actually safeguards the route once it's been agreed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So whilst I badge that as a bit of a potter highlights, I appreciate there's an. So whilst I badge that as a bit of a potted highlights, I appreciate there's an awful lot for members to go through and digest there. I also appreciate it's hard to digest some of this information without a detailed paper in front of you. But hopefully that gives a good indication of the options work that we're going through at the moment. I just wanted to set the final slide here, just to set out kind of next steps. So we're going to continue feverishly to work through these options to help us to arrive at a sort of finalized reasonable alternatives. We'll bring that back as a comprehensive paper for March. And integrating with that, we already began, obviously, you know, the work in terms of the evidence base and that needs integrating with this sort of policy development process, as well as integrating the ideas that have been raised today in terms of the revised scope. So how do we integrate blue infrastructure, soil heritage considerations, now obviously the ecological emergency? All with a view to getting that sustainability process finalized, get ready to have sustainable options, effective policies, you know, for summer twenty twenty two. Including dedicated sessions to go through those policies with members in terms of their formulation as well. Some members will have a good involvement in that process. So appreciate there's a lot to go through, but I'll stop talking there because we've probably gone a bit over time anyway. And obviously, any questions and comments would be gratefully received.
Thanks, Adam. Yes, there was an awful lot to process there. I think just while members are cogitating and ruminating, just draw folks' attention to that last slide. We are going to have a lot of detailed policy sessions over the coming months. So this is not, this is far from our only chance to highlight issues. But I think what I would like to share is for members and officers to have in their mind is that the end, our endpoint really is at all times, our focus point, our endpoint is will this resulting new development in Leeds being zero carbon and perhaps even being beyond zero carbon? So that's where we need to get, we need to have that in bear in our minds at all times. Just go back to a couple of sort of issues to highlighting then, in terms of carbon reduction. And Adam, are we saying, I guess, is it philosophically your point of view that either operational operational zero carbon is different from whole life zero carbon or are they sort of intrinsically interlinked? Just to say, I mean, like, given that we're in the middle of a, well, let's be honest, we're in the middle of a domestic energy market collapse at the moment. And that's, I wish that was hyperbole, but it's not. So the operational aspects of how people live is very much the fore in everyone's minds, I would imagine. Now, we can have that whilst also having something that is operations zero carbon in its birth and its end, as it were. What's your philosophy on that? I think it just might help members. And then after you've answered that, Council Lam's indicated he wants to speak.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. I think a lot of these issues are interlinked. They also interlink with sustainable construction as Dan's gone through. But yeah, in terms of the differences, I suppose, operational energy and operational zero carbon relates really to the point at which somebody is now occupying that building and doesn't really consider what's happened before. Whereas whole life cycle carbon emissions tries to look at it from cradle to grave, which I think a phrase we used in earlier meetings, where you don't just, but also incorporates operational energy, but does look way beyond that and way earlier than that. So looks at things like the materials that were used, how were they transported to site? And also way beyond, you know, you or I being in a building and how energy efficient our light bulbs are, but what happens once the building is no longer needed? Can it be easily reused? Can the materials be recycled easily? Yeah, there are lots of materials that are not easily to be recycled. So the whole life, I think almost whole life cycle carbon emissions can be considered as a whole umbrella that covers the, almost the whole of it from start to finish. But operational energy looks at just that point at which people are in it. And in terms of what we think about how we move forward with it, I think, you know, the stated ambition of the plan is to get to have new planning policies that help us get to net zero by twenty thirty. So we're going to push the envelope on what's the most sustainable and viable option for us to do that, subject to sustainability appraisals. And it may be that in terms of whole life cycle emissions, the picture is a lot more emerging at the moment. You know, there's not many councils that are looking at this. It's quite a brand new idea. We shouldn't think that we're the first, but it's relatively new. Whereas operational energy is a bit more easy to to measure. So as Dan said in the presentation, one of the ideas is we could use the earlier parts of the plan period to essentially amass data about whole life cycle carbon emissions to compel developments, developments to give us the figures, because they don't do that at the moment. We don't have access to these figures at the moment other than the existing policy requirements. So if we just, even that cultural change for developers to think, okay, I need to be able to itemize and account for the carbon emissions of every aspect of my development, even if you're not trying to hit a target, just that mindset change, I think is going to make a huge difference. But also helps us to amass amount of data about what does good look like? And then we can start to think about setting targets perhaps later down the line. So that's an option. We obviously haven't come to any decisions on that, but that's an option.
No. Yeah, you're right. We could have a session on each of these policies individually, no doubt in workshops we will. Council Lam, you're next.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. We're covering a lot of ground and I guess everyone on the call could take up a lot of time making comments, but I'm just going to focus on two things briefly. I'd say I'm leaving my camera off to manage my wifi, but I'm sure everyone's breathing a sigh of relief about that anyways. So the two things I wanted to raise are one around blue infrastructure. And it's just to get an assurance from officers that while I'm really pleased that it's been included and having been the person that put it forward in the first place and that it's been picked up through the consultation, that while it's in, it doesn't just become an afterthought and we've just tagged it on as a headline to green infrastructure. My preference would probably be it had its own section, but I think it would becoming an unwieldy document by then. So I'm quite happy to live with it being in with green infrastructure. But I just would like some reassurance, particularly as the set of slides there, we didn't cover it as a topic area. And I'm conscious of that. And I'd just like some reassurance that we're going to be, excuse me, ambitious, as ambitious for blue infrastructure as we are around green infrastructure and other issues is difficult. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try and take it on and be ambitious about it. The second point is just to pick up on the issues around the conflict with things such as twenty minute neighbourhoods in the outer areas, where it is just, it is impossible to create a twenty minute neighbourhood in somewhere like the area I represent or where councillor Anderson or councillor Campbell or other parts of the city. And it's how we're going to use policy to address those conflicts when they come. So a car free neighbourhood in Wetherby is not going to be an option because there simply isn't the public transport infrastructure to support that. Councillor Anderson made the point well earlier. But there's some big conflicts that we're building in and the climate emergency challenge almost makes the conflict bigger than they were to start with. So it's how are we going to address those issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Oops, sorry. I realised I had my microphone open the entire time, so sorry if you heard me feverishly.
We barely noticed, it's all right. Just on that, thanks, Alan, because my, I mean, I'm sure blue infrastructure won't be forgotten. I think in terms of twenty minute neighbourhoods in outer areas, I think it is, I know what you're saying about public transport infrastructure. And as we've said all along, across many, many D P meetings over the last couple of years, transport is, when looking at climate, the climate emergency, transport is, it is a clear and present Leeds weakness and we've clearly seen a lot of policy being set out and developments to try to address that. But I think in terms of whether it's explicitly a twenty minute neighbourhood or not, I think it's perhaps viewed through the lens of better local centres that are much more accessible. And as a way of leveraging infrastructure and coalescing infrastructure and bringing partners in to make that coalescence happen. I think that's also a very useful way of looking at it. But I think it will be for the policy detail workshops to work out exactly how we make twenty minutes neighbourhoods more real in outer areas. Because obviously they're the more car dependent parts of Leeds. Hence, when we look at the carbon maps, that's why those outer areas have a higher carbon use because there's that higher carbon dependency. You know, I tell you, from a point of view, represents Headingley and High Park, Headingley and High Park are effectively already twenty minute neighbourhoods. So, you know, and I take your points on board. I've got quite a few speakers wanting to come in, so let's take a few elected members, officers, before we come in with some responses. I've got councillor Brooks and councillor Hayden.
Thanks, Chair. I think on the twenty minute neighbourhoods issue. I think in terms of like the reasoning behind it, it's really quite persuasive. Like, if you have everything within a twenty minute walk of where you live, then obviously you don't need to jump in the car. Like, and also, I don't, I don't think that I don't think it's just walking, it's also, you know, that access to public transport as well. So I'd say instead of, instead of sort of potentially knocking a policy on the head because it doesn't fit everywhere. It'd be great if we could. This is, this is going to sound terrible, but have a bit of trust in the planning system to try and get these things to live. Like, yeah, I mean, public transport, obviously, I'm not going to go into into the difficulties around the funding and of the infrastructure for that. But if we don't, if we don't put all our cards on the table and say we want this, I don't know how else it's going to be achieved. So like, although I fully understand like the challenges that are going to be involved in in retrospectively making twenty minute neighbourhoods in the outer areas. And to be fair, like, some of the inner areas aren't that accessible either because of, you know, massive roads cutting through communities and things like this. Like, yeah, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be working towards overcoming those challenges. It might take a while, but hopefully we'll get there.
Yeah. No, I agree. It's like a starting philosophical approach, isn't it? You know, and I think that gels well with what we want to do. Councillor Hayden.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the twenty minute neighbourhoods is, because actually, although I take councillor Lam's point, which is really well made, that it's difficult in the outer areas. Actually, somewhere like Wetherby, you've got everything in the town of Wetherby that you could possibly need. And if you live within the actual town of Wetherby, obviously, if you start to get more rural in terms of where you live, then it becomes much more difficult. But if you live within the, it's got everything you need. It is a very compact twenty minute neighbourhood. You could walk to your house, a lot of people in Wetherby would be able to. Whereas if you live in Cross Green or East End Park, somewhere like that, actually get into decent shops in a twenty minute walk or the doctors or things like that. So yeah, it's something that we should all, we should be striving for, that people can access the services they need, access their community and what it has to offer without needing a car. But as councillor Brooks said, it can be as difficult in some inner city areas. But actually, in a fabulous town like Wetherby, you know, it's got everything, everything you need kind of there within walking distance for many, many people who live in the actual town surrounding the town centre. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for that. And councillor Taylor.
Yeah, I'm saying I agree with councillor Brooks. And we can't seem to have everything under one umbrella. We need to spread it out. And we are talking of health and wellbeing as well. If we have everything just in one place, is that saying we're not going to move about? So we do need to move. And as councillor Brooks says, sometimes we just have to put our trust and confidence and hope it plays right in the expert. I'll agree with some of what councillor Lam said, but we just, I don't agree with everything John Park. I agreed, we have different ages and we have to encourage the younger ones to move. Yes, the elderly will need it close by, but we have to look at a broader picture that accommodates everyone.
Yeah, thanks for that, councillor Taylor. Just picking up a few more issues. I think it'd be, you'd see a really strong set of policy options on on true replacement, true loss ratios, however you want to couch it. I think certainly I see a lot of policies around the country that look at something like a fifteen to one replacement to loss ratio. And I think that's certainly where a lot of people in the country seem to be, which rather than three to one ratio. And it's also the nature of that, that replacement planting, that we've got work to do there, I think, as well. What do folks think about the tension between having local policies versus hoping national policy will get there in the end? I tend to err towards, we have leading edge policies in Leeds and just go for it. Now, that would be tend to my starting point. I just wanted to see whether elected members think about that. Jim? Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
Just to say, I agree, Chair.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Yeah, Leeds, Leeds. I know it's corny, but you know what I mean? Yeah, because I mean, national policy is catching up, but whether it'll continue to, I don't know. I don't want to sound like I have a lack of faith in government to catch up with that, but I think we need to, we need to set our own standards as far as much as we can.
I agree, Chair, because we need to do what's best for Leeds and what fits with our other policies that, you know, into act with the planning policies such as the transport, you know, strategy and things like that. So we really need to look at what's best for Leeds and, you know, forge ahead with our own policymaking as much as we possibly legally can.
Yeah. And what part of the drivers is that is when we've been speaking to developers, they are looking for they're looking for councils to take a lead. And I think that's important. Now, I've got councillor Lam and councillor Brooks's hands up. Are they new hands or old hands?
It's a new hand, Chair.
In that case, over to you, councillor Lam.
Thank you. Well, it's a new hand going back to an old point. So I just wanted to make sure the point I made hadn't been lost. And just to come back to what councillor Hayden said, which is absolutely right, Wetherby is a wonderful place to live. But where she's wrong, and I'll be delighted to bring her and give her a tour around, is it doesn't have everything for everybody. There's often a misconception, a lot of outer areas, that they're lovely places to live, and they are, and that everybody's doing well. That is not, not the case at all. So if you need to visit a job centre and you live in Wetherby, then you're not in a twenty minute neighbourhood. If you've got an outpatient appointment at a hospital, which quite frequently is York, that means that's probably a whole day out to get there for the two hourly bus service that runs. And there's, I'm just, I'm just making, the point I'm trying to make on this is not that we should not strive for twenty minute neighbourhoods. I think we should. The issue I was trying to raise is the tension where it's difficult to do it. Because you don't have enough people that need to access a particular service. Reluctantly accepting that the transport infrastructure problem is not going to be solved by us around in this meeting and forum or anytime soon. So it's how you make sure we are doing the best we possibly can in those areas that can achieve twenty minute neighbourhoods. And how we manage through policies, the tension between policies when you can't meet the core core strategy accessibility standards in a development, that we still make sure we're striving to do the best that we can to support that development in that place.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I think that's illuminating. I think when we get into the detailed policy development of this, we're going to have to be clear, I think, insofar as much as we can be, as to what types of infrastructure can reasonably fit into twenty minutes. Looking at Mr Feeney and Co on this. So for example, to point that Alan raises, something like a job centre, you couldn't reasonably, I don't think, put into a twenty minute neighbourhood categorisation. But a G P's practice you could. So.
I think it's a good point that members are raising about twenty minute neighbourhoods. And I think it's a question of overlaying that, isn't it, with the existing town and district centres we had, which are many and varied in character, and each one will have its own unique identity. I think the common thread across all of them and between them is that it's about improving the vitality and viability of those centres. And where it is possible to locate or co-locate facilities within them, then we should make the most of those opportunities. Because if we can do that as a basis to reduce the number of trips either by the private car or on public transport, then it enables people to live their lives as locally as they can. I suppose the point that councillor Lam is making, that you'll get to a threshold I suppose the point that councillor Lam is making, that you'll get to a threshold where it simply isn't possible to achieve a certain type of facility at that local level. And because of the way different providers and services operate, you can't necessarily neatly fit them within the catchments of a local centre. So it's, it's something we need to look at, I think, with a finer grain, but I think the points are well made. And I don't think we can have a one size fits all. I think the policies need to have sufficient depth and breadth that covers that range of event, eventualities, but with a common theme around trying to retain, improve and enhance the vitality and viability of our centres. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, you Plan Officer. Again, extremely helpful. A policy leave a power fin left to help communities as diverse as Allens, Hallands and Kayleys. So that's no, no mean feat, no, no mean challenge ahead of us. I'm sure we're up for it. Is there any more comments on the, so far? Councillor Brooks, is that a new hand? And councillor Anderson?
It's a new hand, Chair.
Over to you then.
Um, so, I mean, it, this is just my brain being probably a bit mental, but do we need to perhaps designate new centres, like work out where the, um, the areas are that don't have much my way of co-coverage?
Hmm.
Um, and like that had also, um, maybe answered the question of employment sites as well. Um, but I do understand that there's a minimum, um, amount of residents needed per, um, per centre to, to make a, make a place viable. Um, yeah, I, I do, I do wonder if, like, if we were to map all of the, all of the centres and, and work out like exactly where all the 20 minute neighbourhoods are. Like, could, you know, if there's a, if there's a big gap in the middle of a load of them, like, maybe we could just designate one there.
Mm-hmm. Really good questions. I think Adam can illuminate us on some work that's been along those lines. Am I right, Adam?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, um, and obviously if Catherine and Martin wanted to come in, um, on, on this topic, obviously they may be able to add more detail. But in terms of town centres, uh, we're, we're doing a lot of work at the moment. Um, uh, to, to assess kind of the health of centres following Covid and to get a better understanding of that, we're doing an awful lot of, of onsite assessments, just to, and, and and not just capturing sort of qualitative data, but, but quantitative data as well. So trying to, and be able to compare our centres as well, just to see where, where best practice is and where healthy centres are and aren't. Um, but I think members have raised, uh, some really key philosophical questions really about this 20 minute neighbourhood question, if I may say so. Um, you know, it's, because the question at the heart of it, I suppose, is, do we, do we, is our aspiration to create 20 minute neighbourhoods? Or is it to direct development to where they already exist? That's kind of the, one of the questions that's at the heart of it. Um, so if, if it's the former, as I think councillor Brooks suggests, you know, do we, do we, we're trying to turn everywhere into a 20 minute neighbourhood. How could we go about doing that? As councillor Lam says, there are other areas of the city that, um, are going to be quite difficult to achieve that. Um, I know i- in Catherine's team, uh, and Ian's team, the work has been done, um, to look at, um, where we think already 20 minute neighbourhoods exist. Um, so that, that map that councillor Brooks suggests, we, we, we've tried to create a kind of proxy for that. I say proxy because, um, we've used the locations of local and town centres and 20 minute distances to that. Now, the 20 minute concept's a little bit more subtle and just town centres. There are other things in there and not in there, but we can use it as a proxy. And it, and as, as I think as both councillor Brooks and Hayden said, there are areas in the inner areas that, that don't meet those, you know, those criteria either. It's not just the outer areas. Um, but we'd have a real, we are certainly able through, through policy. I would argue whether this is the plan to do it, but we're, we, we are able to designate centres. The issue is obviously whether the market is interested in actually providing the facilities that are required to make it a 20 minute neighbourhood. Councillor, councillor Brooks is absolutely right in terms of the amount of people that are required. You know, when you think of new supermarkets, new doctor surgeries, they work on models that require a number of people within walking distance or driving distance. Um, and if those models aren't there too, they won't really provide facilities there. So there's a difficulty in us sort of preemptively saying, this is where a town centre should be, but doesn't currently exist. Um, the difference is though, if it's as part of a new development, so as part of the East East Extension, um, through the SPD that, that provided some detail on that, we were able to say that, you know, new centres should be provided as part of this development, um, to make sure that people have access to sustainable facilities. Um, so new development does allow us those options. Um, if we're doing it within existing communities, it does become a bit challenging as to how realistic it is for the market to actually deliver it. But all debate that we should definitely be having, um, and I certainly don't want to close off any options there. I think that they're all very valid points. So Martin's got his hand up. I don't know if you want to just follow up on that.
Yeah, man, is it directly relevant to what's been raised? Cause councillor Anderson's been waiting, but if you want to go for it, Martin, that's fine.
I, I, I was just gonna say, and I'll keep it short. I, I, I think what might help members here is that if we think about 20 minute neighbourhoods not just being one policy, but being an approach that will sit across the plan, that helps implement a lot of policies. So instead of just thinking about accessibility as a determinant of housing growth on its own, we're thinking about accessibility along with town centre health, along with density, along with design and place making, with, 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 with the focus on neighbourhood and with a focus on accessible neighbourhood. So, so, so if that helps, um, I, 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 it, it, it will, it, it may be that we need to finish off the task of a fully compliant 20 minute neighbourhood plan when it comes to local plan update too, when we're looking at employment allocations and housing allocations and town centre, um, designations. Um, so, so, and I think if that's the case, we can explore that in a workshop to give a bit more clarity in terms of what we need to do now and what we'll do next.
That's good, man. Yeah, thanks. That's helpful. Um, councillor Anderson?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, the council were piloting out the, design codes for specific areas. Now, when they've been working with the other pilot groups, have they been discussing this concept of the 20 minute ne- neighbourhood as to whether or not that should be included? And also with Ian McKay being in the call as well, those areas that have a neighbourhood plan, has there been any discussion, not necessarily about 20 minute neighbourhood, but at a national level about neighbourhood plans, looking at how they can build in what's needed in that, that area? And those areas that don't have neighbourhood plans, is it not then incumbent upon the council to develop some sort of local design plan to fit in with all of these, these types of things? I mean, it's, it's a way forward. I mean, we're not saying that the government are definitely going to conform with the design codes, but we were given money to pilot them out. Have we come, have we started to expand on any of those as part of our discussions on the design codes?
Now, good questions. Um, officers?
Yeah, thank you councillor Anderson. Um, i- in ter- in terms of neighbourhood planning, I'm gonna start with the positive. I mean, we, we have recently been advised that we've been successful, successful in securing some pilot funding for inner city and more deprived communities. And one of the things that I'm keen to do is to explore the concept of 20 minute neighbourhoods in those particular areas. Um, but of course, with the plans that are either already made in Leeds or are well progressed, there is a bit of a time lag, because those plan, those policies in those plans were actually developed some years ago. They've taken quite some time to get through the system. And councillor Anderson, in your word, I mean, you know, Adel and, and other areas, you know, um, you know, that's been taking place for some time. So it might be a matter of review. There are some, there are some areas that are looking to review their neighbourhood plans and I'm, and I'm, I'm keen to support those areas, uh, to do that. But, but yes, there is a, there is a huge opportunity through the neighbourhood planning process to, to, to explore that.
Okey dokey. Uh, thanks for that, Ian. Martin, is that a new hand or?
Yeah, thanks councillor. Ju- ju- just to say on the national model design code, councillor Anderson, having tested the government's, um, approach to that and, and, and looked specifically at whether it was possible to, um, to go down a sort of a coding route for large swathes of the city, I think the conclusion that we reached was that design was much better being reactive to particular neighbourhoods and particular circumstances, um, as they arise. So we would certainly be looking to prepare policies that really, um, support that approach. And that would be, um, along the lines of, um, updating, um, uh, neighbourhoods for living, the council's current SPD on design, and giving that a lot more prominence through, um, uppercase policy within the plan.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I mean, that because, I mean, it was councillor Hayden was talking about a number of inner city areas. And it's just, they may not have a neighbourhood plan, but it's how, what can we do as a council to actually give them support so that they can develop a cohesive strategy? It's fine in some of our areas, you know, even in Headingly, you've got active people who are interested in that type of thing. Not every community necessarily benefits from the same there. So it's what can we do as a council to help these communities develop localised plans, not call them neighbourhood plans, but localised plans. That's where I was coming from.
Um, can I just come in there? Because Headingly, uh, there's a number of what we would call more inner city areas. Holbaker was obviously the, the first of quite a few years ago. Headingly and Headingly's neighbourhood plan is nearing completion, um, and, um, as is Hyde Parks. And these are, these are proper neighbourhood plans. And, um, really, so we're starting in Chapel Town and Chapel Allerton. And, and this pilot funding will look at neighbourhood plans, um, in areas such as Hair Hills and, um, and Lincoln Green and, um, and places like that. Um, yeah, so, and Little Woodhouse, as, as councillor Brooks says in the, in the chat. So actually, we are doing, and it's down to the support and the huge amount of work that Ian and his team, um, have put, have put and have continued to put. And that's why they've won this funding, this pilot funding, to specifically look at inner city areas. And I think it's really important with all our policies, so, and especially the ones that we're looking at today in terms of the ecological environment, greening, um, all those sorts of things. Um, it's really important into these, um, neighbourhood plans going forward. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks councillor Hayden. As I'm frequently fond of saying, there is an awful lot going on. Right. Don't see any more speaks on this item. And I'm just conscious of time, we're probably gonna run a bit over. Um, we've given obviously the team a lot to think about. Um, just thinking, shall we move on to, if everyone's in a cup to the same and a community involvement item? Um, so that's Ian and Caroline.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, before I hand over to Caroline Harris, who will, uh, take you through the main points in the report, I just want to say a few words about where we are and what happens next. But actually also to record our thanks to those who have taken part in the scoping consultation. We've had some really good comments, although it was some time ago. Um, but also to the members of the SCI engagement group, um, who have been made up of a range of stakeholders, including community and business, who have been really quite constructive and positive in their advice and support so far. So that's been a real, a real benefit in, in this piece of work. But of course, we have an interim SCI and that has allowed us to continue to deliver a quality planning service during the period of COVID restrictions. But we now need to look forward towards the next five years and adopt an SCI that is capable of meeting the opportunities and the challenges that lie ahead. So we will present a draft document to the March DPP meeting prior to consultation. Um, and at that consultation, we can utilise some of the now tried and tested techniques successfully used in the local plan update consultation last summer. And of course, restrictions permitting undertake face-to-face consultation hopefully. Um, but before we do that, we have an opportunity at this meeting to take stock and discuss what the new document should look like, what it should include. And importantly, how we can set the tone for engagement and consultation for the next five years. And as highlighted in the previous discussion, this is going to be a critical period for planning for the district and for climate change. So as mentioned, Caroline will now take you through, uh, the main points in the report. Over to you, Caroline. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ian. Um, good afternoon, everybody. Um, in thinking about what the new SCI should look like and what it should include, we have had the benefit of a positive and constructive SCI engagement group who also helped design the successful scoping consultation, where we had good feedback from local residents, community and neighbourhood planning groups, businesses and other stakeholders. The key points made included that the fact that many were unaware of what's happening in planning and how they can get involved. We should consider the best use of social media, apps and digital opportunities, while not forgetting more traditional methods that are, that are important for many. There is concern that comments on planning matters more generally are not always taken into account. And there's a lack of knowledge about how to find the outcomes of an application or consultation and where feedback on responses is provided. More community engagement by the development industry is wanted. We should use plain English, minimising technical language jargon and acronyms in planning documents. And public consultations should be a genuine effort to gauge public opinion and views, not just a box ticking PR exercise. These points are consistent with the major University of Reading research recently carried out into SCIs as committed, commissioned by Civic Voice. But this research goes deeper into how SCIs could be improved, including defining some smart consultation principles that can be agreed and actioned by us and communities. Consider the SCI or parts of it as a joined up council-wide document to ensure the principles are consistent across the authority. Make the SCI locally specific to Leeds and not just a generic repetition of the statutory requirements. Consider a two-part SCI with part one being based on the consultation principles and part two being the more operational-based document. Highlight any innovations used which go beyond this statutory requirements whilst not overpromising what can be delivered based on budgets, time and resources. And consider effective monitoring and review. Uh, as mentioned by Adam in the previous presentation, the local plan update consultation shows how we can successfully work across the council to undertake efficient and effective consultation and make the best use of digital technology. And this will be a key element of the new SCI. When we considered the results of the scoping consultation, the University of Reading research and the local plan update consultation together, one solution for a more user-friendly document would be to have a three-part document with distinctive but related parts which would help with navigation, clarity and ultimately more effective and sufficient and efficient consultation and engagement. So we were thinking part one could be a fairly light touch introduction into what is an SCI? What is planning and what is it seeking to achieve? The difference between consultation and engagement and an overview of what the planning matters are that we consult and engage on. This section would also set out the consultation principles we co-produced with the engagement group as outlined on page 50 of your report, as well as any tips and advice on how consultees can get the most out of consultation. Part two would be the more operational section of the SCI, setting out how we will consult on the preparation of policy documents, publicise planning applications and support neighbourhood planning. This section will detail the statutory requirements, but we will also set out those areas where we may be able to do more subject to resources. Part three would be an opportunity to make the document more locally specific to Leeds, describing some of the operation, opportunities and challenges for consultation and engagement in the district and our ideas for tackling them. These include using the most appropriate methods of engagement for each area or neighbourhood, targeting those harder to reach groups, as we tried with the local plan update consultation, and making sure our advancements in digital consultation and engagement do not leave behind people who are not online or do not feel comfortable using this medium. We would also set out in part three how we will monitor and review the effectiveness of the SCI moving forward. We thought this could include having a series of indicators to help judge effectiveness. Some examples of this could be a 100% success rate at neighbourhood plan examination or the extent of engagement with all neighbourhoods on the preparation of planning policy documents. This could then become a feature in the annual monitoring report. Your report poses three of the key questions to consider in revising the SCI. I'll just detail these quickly. Number one, to what extent does this three part SCI as outlined respond positively to the Civic Voice report and the issues raised during the scoping consultation? How can we make the best use of digital technology, interactive website, online workshops, digital advertising etcetera, but still ensure those who can't or won't take part online are included in consultation engagement? And what indicators could we include to judge the success of consultation and engagement activity in the future? Thank you very much. We will be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Right folks, councillor Brooks is first.
Thanks Chair. Thank you for the report there. There's some really useful things in there. I was just wondering, what thought has been given to visiting community committees and getting community committee chairs involved in specifically like the place making aspects around this? Because in my experience, people don't really care that much about planning until there's something that they don't like. And they'll say things like, well, no one ever told me and blah, 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 blah. So like, what sort of active engagement? I understand about resourcing. I understand about resourcing, I really do. But in terms of like active engagement, like I do, I do feel like community committees may be a way of like getting in there. And also that it should be pitched more as a sort of place making, rather than being bogged down in really, like you say, before, like you said before, the acronyms and the really technical jargon-y sort of planning language. Something simple like a, what kind of place do you want to live in? Just, and then, you know, it's opening a discussion as to what, like making it a positive thing, rather than talking about specific policies and things like this. So then, you know, you're taking, you're taking what people want to see and then trying to work it into new policy, rather than baffling people with really complex policy stuff. I don't know. Does that make sense? I can't tell.
No, it does. What does Ian and Caroline think?
That makes perfect sense councillor. And it actually chimes very well with my own personal experience of dealing with community committee on neighbourhood planning matters. I mean, there was a time when, as neighbourhood planning plans were progressing, I would take them to community committee, not every community committee actually, but quite a number of them, inner south and outer north, north east in particular at that time. And that was a very effective method of not just me engaging with that committee, but actually the people preparing the plans actually engaging with the committee as well and actually highlighting a number of issues and priorities. So I think that's a really good point and one that can certainly be taken forward. There's also a really timely point as well, because Martin and I actually have a meeting with Liz Jarman. I think it's coming up on Thursday, if I remember correctly, to discuss that very point. Although the focus will initially be only on the priority neighbourhoods, but it is something that we are very keen to take forward. And no doubt, we will report back to this panel in due course.
Thanks Ian. Really helpful. councillor Gruen.
Thank you. Just a few comments really on the narration that we've just had. First of all, I think it should be specific to Leeds as possible. So I think you were mentioning an annex or a section that made it very Leeds specific. I think it should be very, very Leeds specific. I mean, we are all here to represent our city and the more relevant it can be to our own surroundings, the better from my point of view. So it's a yes from me to that one. And the second point I wanted to make, and I have said this before when we've been talking about neighbourhood plans, the links that you make with neighbourhood planning are very, very valid and I completely see why they are there. But I would just ask you particularly, if you were using neighbourhood planning scoring, for example, as success criteria, to just bear in mind the difference in capacity for community engagement in different parts of the city. The reason that we in Bramley, for example, don't have a neighbourhood plan is because it is extremely difficult to engage our communities in wanting to do that, let alone take a lead in it. And the only way we wind up with one is if one of the three councillors leads it and engages others. And, you know, it would then be a councillor led plan. So I would ask you to bear in mind the different community capacities and also the different registers in which I think we need to engage with communities around the city. So for me, if we're going to involve the people that I represent, it will have to not be dry. It will not have to have jargon in it. And it will have to be not written in planning language because we lose them straight away, a lot of them. So I think we have to think about the art of consultation, as well as what we're consulting about and how we're consulting. That would be what I would have to say. And I absolutely agree with the comments that have been made about taking it to community committees. I think that is a very, very valid way of consulting. And neighbourhood forums from that point of view as well.
Yep. Yeah, I agree. councillor Anderson.
Just briefly, if you take the issues we've been discussing in the earlier part of this agenda today, how would we operationalise the language and the discussion that we've been talking about today? How would we do that? And how would this SCI go along to helping explain to the public? Because some people who are engaged with the planning process would have understood what we were talking about today. But I would hazard a guess that maybe 70, 80% of the public out there would have a clue what some of the issues were and the effects of them. So what I would say, what would be an interesting test is, how will we go about explaining to these groups what we're actually talking about today when it goes out for its next level of consultation? You know, it's how would we do it? I mean, and will this proposal meet that requirement or does it need refining?
Yeah, it's a good point.
Really good point councillor Anderson. I mean, I think, I mean, before Martin, I think Martin might want to say a few words there as well. But I think the key one that I want to make is that's in some ways where the engagement strategy comes in prior to consultation taking place. So it's not just about who you want to engage with. So for example, the harder to reach groups or whatever. But the critical thing is how do you engage? And, you know, evidence strongly suggests in Leeds that different things work in different parts of the district. And I think we're not quite there yet. But I think that's one of the opportunities that we have in part three of the SCI is in making it locally distinctive. We can begin to get under the skin of what does work in different parts of the district and what doesn't work. And actually start to draft engagement strategies for the work that we're doing related to that. And I think that is the way, the way in. There is of course going to have to be an element of trying and testing on this as well, because it isn't, it isn't an exact science consultation and engagement, of course. And we will need to feel our way somewhat.
Yeah, I agree. Martin and Adam?
Thanks councillor Walsh. So yeah, just councillor Anderson raises a very good point. And I hope that some of the consultation methods that were deployed for the local plan update, Reg 18 consultation, July to September last year, showed that we're starting to do that. Hopefully, members could see that some of the language and the wording on the website and the navigability of the website and the use of pictures and the use of diagrams etcetera, was really starting to talk and engage people. And we can go further. And I think we have at our disposal some very good urban designers within the council. And it's my intention that when we go out for specific policies, I'd like to draw what good looks like. I'd like to be able to show people in Leeds what we think the different development or the different types of policy will be and have them engaged with a picture, rather than words on a page. So you're absolutely right. But it's various sort of techniques like that, that I think we're really up for using.
Great. Yeah, very much agree. I think we're making progress. Right. A little bit conscious of time, but when there's any further comments regarding the SCI? And if there isn't, it might be useful to just briefly outline Ian, what's the next steps as a refresher for members?
Yes, thanks councillor. And we'll come back to the March meeting with a draft SCI and Luke to undertake consultation on that shortly afterwards.
Brilliant. Right. And thank you very much for that.
On that point, I just pointed out that the local elections are coming up. There might be a degree of controversy in it and you don't want to get involved in that.
Wow. Yeah. Well, our next, our next day, so Barry, we've got...
You've got about a fortnight before Pirda starts.
Yeah.
If you're very quick to consult, it'd be interesting to know what Philippa thinks about the legalities of consulting during Pirda.
Yeah, on that note, Philippa? Put you on the spot or anything, but you know.
Oh.
I think you're muted Philippa, sorry? Councillor Anderson, you're causing chaos.
I know, I didn't mean to. I was actually trying to be helpful.
I was, I was, I was wondering, I mean, I probably regret this. Philippa, are you unmuted now?
I'll go back to the microphone rather than the computer.
Brilliant, thank you.
Yeah, consultation can still sort of technically occur. It would just be a case though of members therefore refraining from entering into interaction on the consultation and standing apart from that.
Chair, if I was going to offer, I think certainly it would be really helpful to show pace on this and bring it back to DPP in March. There is an option for members to make an agreement to consult on this and then hold that consultation in abeyance for a period of time. But certainly, we would advise members at the time and at that panel as to the risks associated with any consultation that were to occur to stray into the Pirda period. But certainly the decision to consult, as Philippa said, would be prior to Pirda starting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm relatively comfortable with that. I must admit myself as chair. But we do need to keep the pace up across the board with both the local plan review and the SCI. So our next meeting dates are... Now, Martin, am I right in thinking we've got two dates proposed for March's meeting?
Yes Chair. The site allocations plan remittal finishes its consultation at the end of this month. And in order to allow the planning inspector sufficient time to be able to consider a report and bring back to that DPP meeting, there is a suggestion that we hold that meeting on either the 14th or the 15th of March, instead of right at the beginning of March on the first.
Okay. I mean, I'm not wanting to do diary planning live on the internet or anything, but looking at my own, I've elected members now scrabbling for a device to look at their diaries.
I can do this by email if it's more helpful, Chair.
March 14th works for me, what can I say?
I can't move on Monday, just to let you know. And this is statutory meeting, which means our attendance is monitored, of course.
And we could do the, we could do the Tuesday. It clashes with plans, Chair, but I think we need to make progress on all these things. So let's do this by email. Let's circulate a poll as it were, and we'll go from there. In that case, I think we're done colleagues. Yep, good. In that case, going to formally close the meeting, wish to all a safe journey downstairs, put the kettle on or wherever you are. And I'll see you all very soon. Thanks for everything this afternoon, folks. Much appreciated.
Thank you Chair. Thanks everybody. Bye.